This is Tuesday, December 1st, 2020. This is a work session of the Portland City Council. Today's subject is a proposal around pay differential. And with that, we'll turn it over to Commissioner Fritz. Good morning, Commissioner Fritz.
Good morning, colleagues. Thank you for being here, and I'm really excited to present this proposal today. Yesenia Carrillo and Cynthia Castro on my staff are going to guide us through the presentation. Yesenia, if you could please share your screen. So for the past year, my office has been leading the development of a new language pay differential benefit for multilingual City of Portland employees. Today's work session is an opportunity for us to share with you our progress, recommendations for the benefit, the importance of the benefit, and how it aligns with established city goals and values to elicit your feedback as we show the final project. Next slide, please. So that's, sorry, I didn't practice my part about advancing the slides, so you can see on the screen what the goals of today are. And in addition to staff, presenters, and guest speakers, we are joined by representatives from the City Budget Office, Bureau of Human Resources, and City Attorney's Office, who are available to help answer questions should the need arise. We believe it is long overdue that we compensate multilingual city employees whose language skill sets have been vital to helping us fulfill our commitments and obligation to serve all Portlanders, especially those who are underserved and underrepresented. The times we are living in now reaffirm how important it is that the city adopts strategies to improve recruitment and retention of culturally competent workforce and remove barriers that have kept communities disconnected from their local government. It is time that we catch up to other jurisdictions that already offer a language pay differential benefit for their employees, such as the City of Hillsborough, Montgomery County, and the state of Oregon, and many others across Oregon and the United States. Our goal is to bring the language pay differential policy back to council in a couple of weeks. We will be proposing an effective date of July 1st, 2021. This will give bureaus time to factor in the new benefit into their budgets for the fiscal year 2122, and allow ample time for the work that needs to happen to implement the new policy. Before I turn it over to staff, I acknowledge the advocacy that has taken place at the city over many years in support of a language pay differential benefit. I've heard you, city staff, and I'm happy to bring this to my colleagues for consideration. And I will now turn this over to staff, thank you. I think Tatiana Elie-Halde is next.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Fritz. Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners, my name is Tatiana Lejalde. I am a co-lead on this policy, and I work with the Office of Equity and Human Rights as the city's Equity and Language Access Analyst, and presently serve as the Equity Officer and Language Access Lead for the Emergency Response. It's my pleasure to be with you here today to be able to discuss the language pay differential. To start us off this morning, we just want to get grounded in what the definition is of a language pay differential. So language pay differential is given to employees by their employer when that employer recognizes that the employee's use of language in addition to English brings additional benefits to the organization. The benefit is not just for the employee and the organization, but also truly a benefit for the community that the organization is hoping to engage with and reach. Next slide, please. The foundation of this policy is really rooted in four pillars: Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, and our ability to assess institutional language barriers and remove them; community need and enhanced service delivery; workplace equity, so looking at the retention of employees who provide this value and this skill; and employer of choice when we're looking at recruiting for talent. Next slide, please. So as a governmental entity receiving federal funding, we're subject to obligations to Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, and we need to ensure protections on for non-discrimination based on race, color, and national origin. Title VI is also expanded to include limited English proficiency. So this policy would be looking at our responsibilities around national origin and limited English proficiency, non-discrimination. Next slide, please. Community need. So the landscape of our community in the City of Portland is really changing and growing, and we are responsible for providing equitable service delivery and meaningful access to the benefits of government to all community members. According to the most recent census data, 19.4% of Portland's population speaks a language other than English at home. And of those, 8.1%, over 49,000 people over the age of five, identify as speaking English less than very well. So that would put them in the category of being identifying as being limited English proficient, and that they are community members, and the landscape of our community is changing such that we will have increased numbers of people that are experiencing institutional language barriers when trying to connect with their city government. Next slide, please. According to 311 Language-Based Survey, 66% of their respondents said they had never contacted the city, and 36% of those that responded stated language barriers as a reason for not contacting and engaging with our city government. It's very important that we do take a look at the 311 program. I was served as subject matter expert for this process, for the implementation process, and it's really important because these folks that are working for 311 and previously the Information and Referral are really important staff. There's our frontline staff across the city are really important in being that connector and engaging with community who may be experiencing language barriers in contacting the city. And as we're looking to be an employer of choice and we're wanting to recruit talent, this is certainly one program that would benefit from being able to recruit talent that was multilingual, and of course, already have existing staff that are providing that service. Next slide, please. Now it is my great honor to be able to present an amazing city staff and a wonderful human being, Irene Konav.
Good morning, Mayor Wheeler, Commissioners, and everyone else who is going to hear a little bit about my journey at the city so far and how it relates to our topic today, the language pay differential policy. And I wanted to take a moment to thank Cynthia Castro for all that she's done to move this work forward, and of course, Commissioner Fritz, who has been the champion behind this. I'm Irene Konav, and for the last 11 years, I've worked for the City Auditors Independent Review, where we accept and investigate complaints about police misconduct. I'm also a member, excuse me, of the Russian-speaking community. And when I first came to work at City Hall, there was no one that worked here that identified with the same community as myself. But as I began to build relationships with the diverse community, and particularly the immigrant community, and especially as I got out on Russian radio to share the message about who we are and what we do, I began to receive calls from the Russian-speaking community. They reached out to me about complaints about police, commendations about police, but they were also reaching out to me because they had maybe a tree that they wanted to save in their neighborhood from construction crews, when they had sidewalk issues that they wanted to address, or many, many other concerns as they began to know that there was one person that they could call at the city that spoke their language. And I remember one particular day when there was someone from the, I think it was Commissioner Fish at the time, there was a Russian-speaking elderly woman who came to seek housing because she was in a domestic violence situation. And I was able to sit with her, hear her in her own language, and help her find the resources that she needed to get in, get out of that domestic violence situation. And as time went on, more and more city staff became aware of the extensive connections I had within the Russian community. And so when they were seeking volunteers from the diverse community and they wanted to include the Russian community, or if they were recruiting for their positions, they would often reach out to me to share the message within the Russian community. And the first request that really brought some bigger initiatives to the Russian community was, it came from, then he was the captain of the precinct. Today, he's the sheriff, Sheriff Reese. And we gathered for a meeting just to begin to talk about what the community needed, what the Russian community needed from the police, because they wanted to find more relationships with the Russian community. And then eight years later, this month, we're going to be celebrating eight years since the Slavic Advisory Council was founded. The Slavic Advisory Council is a council of Slavic leaders that sits and advises the chief of police. And through the Slavic Advisory Council, we were also able to coordinate and translate the Oregon Driver's Manual into Russian. And today, that Russian manual sits on, is found on the Slavic Advisory Council website and also on the Slavic Empowerment Team website. Over time, I found that more Russian speakers were hired by the city, and I initiated the Slavic Empowerment Team through the diverse and empowered employees of Portland. And now we have a large group of folks who identify with the Slavic Russian-speaking community, and together, we are able to really engage with the Russian-speaking community. And the Slavic Empowerment Team also created the Slavic Eastern European Week Proclamation to lift this almost invisible community of about 150,000 Russian speakers in the Portland metro area. And on January 13th at 2:00 PM, we are all excited, excuse me, we're all excited to hear the mayor make this proclamation for the fourth year in a row. That is really quite an accomplishment. And to the best of my knowledge, and the other colleagues who work with me on these things, both the existence of the Slavic Advisory Council and the Eastern European Proclamation Week is the first in the nation. And I'm sharing this because this was really hard work. This was also really, really important work. And for everyone like myself who speaks a different language than English, we all have a similar journey, and we all work exceptionally hard to, we're interrupted in the middle of the day to translate for someone on the phone, in person, or we are taking initiatives, new initiatives to, that we're creating or establishing, or we're supporting the current system as it is to try to translate documents. Some of the folks I know will spend an entire day translating documents, and we're often coming across a lot of challenges because we still have to perform our regular duties and all this work. But this is important work. This is really important work, and this is the work that makes our city special, and it makes the employer of choice that we were just talking about. So I'll stop here, but if anyone has questions, I would love to talk more about this, but I know that we have a lot in front of us. So thank you for your time today.
Thank you so much for sharing your experiences, Irene. I'd like to take a brief moment to be able to share some of my story as well and my experience around this topic. In my bureau, I have often been the person where, when a Spanish caller calls our bureau, all the phone calls will be routed to me so that I can be able to engage with that individual and try to deduce what their need is in contacting the city, as well as I've been asked by other bureaus to provide recordings of my voice for messages that would be for very crucial public-facing programs where they're hoping to be able to reach the Spanish-speaking community. And very importantly, I'd like to share some of my experiences with regard to the Emergency Coordination Center. Through my work in the Coordination Center, Emergency Coordination Center, been able to use my language ability to be able to, for example, send out emergency alert messages that were going to be sent out only in English and be able to send them out in Spanish as well, as well as many of the other projects that I was able to lend my language ability to, which in some circumstances would save us budget that we would allocate perhaps to working with a professional to have a review of some documents or, and I have other colleagues at the Emergency Coordination Center who are using their language ability to be able to provide crucial services to the community. One such example is with the Joint Volunteer Information Center and with the Food Securities Program. We have staff in those programs that bring their language ability, their lived experiences, and their connections to community that create a really crucial trust-building opportunity and that warm connection to community where perhaps they had never had engagement with city government before. With the CARES cards distribution, we were able to have staff who, because of their lived experience and their language ability, were able to directly hand the cards to individuals who were experiencing very, very extreme hardships and needed those CARES cards. And it was our staff providing their language ability to connect with community that was really made a huge difference, and they do that every day in their role for the Emergency Coordination Center. And this policy is also in alignment with the City of Portland core values and with our racial equity goals and strategies. And now I would like to hand the presentation over to Yesenia Carrillo, who will describe the policy process we went through. Thank you.
Thank you, Tatiana. For our recommendations. On your screens, you will see a timeline of every step we took to get here today. Our goal in following this timeline was to cover as many questions and partner before coming to you. Our process starts in late spring with the internal research phase, and then several steps in between until November 2020 to arrive here today. We'll explore each milestone you see on the timeline in the next few slides. So this slide will walk us through all the steps we took internally to inform the proposal and our recommendations. The first bullet point is the internal research phase, which took place in spring of 2019. In this phase, we looked for prior or existing policy work at the city that was related to language pay differential. While conversations have occurred among employee groups and at union bargaining tables, no policy proposal or agreements have come from either. Upon the internal research phase, our office put together a policy team to offer their expertise and experience to inform the proposal. The team is made up of city employees from the following bureaus: the Office of Equity and Human Rights, Bureau of Human Resources, Community and Civic Life Information and Referral, the Independent Police Review, the Portland Housing Bureau, and representatives from the Revenue Division at the Office of Management and Finance. So the second point is the Latinx PDX Affinity Group Focus Groups. And this took place in the summer of 2019. To understand the experiences of multilingual city employees and gather qualitative data, we held internal focus groups with Latinx PDX affinity group members. Latinx PDX members have a history of discussing language pay differential for bilingual skills. It's a matter that has been at the forefront of the group and that of other multicultural, multilingual affinity groups. The policy team informed a total of nine questions to be explored with each focus group. The focus group opportunity drew participants from eight bureaus: the Portland PBOT, OMF Revenue, the Portland Water Bureau, BHR, EDS, BPS, and the Housing Bureau, and the Office of Civic Life, all identifying as natives, Spanish speakers, Russian, or Lao. The positions of these participants range from public-facing customer service to managers. All participants reporting using their language skills in some capacity to serve community members with limited English proficiency. The third bullet point you see is the online employee survey, which also took place in the summer of 2019. Their survey consisted of 10 questions developed by the policy team and was shared with the diverse empowered employees of Portland and the city's Information and Referral Employee Language Bank. We received a total of 155 responses. Participants reported using 24 languages in addition to English to perform their job responsibilities and better serve community members. Participants reported being asked to serve community members in the needed language primarily by a colleague or the community member themselves. The following quote was provided by a survey participant: "So whether we were hired or not for our multilingual abilities, those of us that speak relevant languages will always be sought out as a resource by colleagues to help craft culturally appropriate messages, and those of us that speak other languages will never refuse, because ultimately, these are messages that one way or another have an impact to the communities we belong to." This slide will walk us through the step we took externally to inform our proposal and recommendations. This step was taken in the spring and summer of 2019. So our policy team informed the development of 25 questions that helped us guide interviews with the jurisdictions on the screen. You will note that most of the local jurisdictions, including the state, have some sort of language pay differential policy. The following were our findings from these interviews with the jurisdictions. From the jurisdictions, we found that business and community need was the rationale for creating language pay differential policies. For the most part, all job types, including full-time, part-time, represented, non-represented, seasonal, were eligible if there was a proven business need, if there was supervisor approval, and if they passed a testing requirement. We also found that most jurisdictions still maintain contracts with professional language service providers for matters related to public health and safety, financial impacts, and legal implications. They took this measure to protect the employee and the community member who reserves the right to obtain public information in whatever language they request. The language pay differential policy at the City of Hillsborough is one that stood out the most to the policy team for its focus on workplace equity and community outreach. Their language pay differential policy is open to all employees, regardless of job classification or type. The employee must demonstrate that they have the ability to speak Spanish or any other language spoken by over 10% of the city's residents as documented by the most recent U.S. census. In our policy conversations and in interviews with them, they expressed that they are constantly looking at how to improve their policy. While Hillsborough's policy most inspired our team and was most aligned with our equity goals and preferred outcomes, barriers presented by state pay equity statutes have challenged our team's recommendation that this differential be available to all job types and duties. Until pay equity can be revised and revisited by the Office of Government Relations at the state legislator, legislator, we have pivoted from this universal approach, and Cynthia will guide us through the three pathways later in the presentation. So upon gathering all our research, internal and external, we had many discussions with our policy team and crafted our recommendations. Once we had those, we started engaging with all the stakeholders you see on your screen. We've engaged with these stakeholders through the last year. Our recommendations are rooted in the takeaways from our touchpoints with internal and external stakeholders, and in rethinking the challenges and concerns shared with us throughout the policy development process. We have also relied heavily on the feedback from city employees who have been providing the service to multilingual and limited English proficient community members for years. Up next, Cynthia will guide us through our team's recommendations.
Thanks, Yesenia. Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Cynthia Castro, and I'm a senior policy advisor for Commissioner Fritz and one of the co-leads for this policy initiative. I will present the proposed recommendations that our policy team developed through the process Yesenia outlined for you. Next slide, please. In researching other jurisdictions with the language pay differential benefit, we found that many offered either a percentage of base wage or a set dollar amount. For example, the state of Oregon offers 10% of monthly base wage, and the city of Gresham pays between $125 to $150 per month. As a policy team, we had a lot of discussion about which direction to go and ultimately opted for a set dollar, ultimately opted for a set dollar amount because we saw it as more equitable than percentage of base wage. If we were to adopt the percentage of base wage model, employees with higher base wages would receive greater compensation than employees with lower base wages. We are proposing $1 per hour be added to qualifying employees' base salary. This would pay an amount proportionate to the number of hours worked by the employee rather than the same amount, no matter how many hours worked. The benefit would only be paid on hours worked, not sick time, vacation time, nor while employees are on leave. The benefit would be applied to all hours an employee works, not just the hours when the employee is doing language interpretation work. This simplifies timekeeping, reduces administrative discretion, and recognizes that multilingual employees bring a different perspective to their work at all times due to their lived experiences. The annual cost per employee is dependent on whether the employee is PERS or OPSRP, but is estimated at $2,700 per individual full-time employee who is certified in the program. Next slide, please. We are recommending three pathways for designating positions that benefit from a language skill because they remove barriers for multilingual and multicultural community members and bring value to the institution and are therefore eligible for the language pay differential. This includes designating positions that at a minimum should be eligible for the language pay differential benefit from the outset. Examples include, but are not limited to, 311 Bureau Customer Service Staff, Council Office Staff, Police Fire 911 Staff, Park Rangers, Office of Equity, employees serving the Emergency Coordination Center, or Bureau Equity Managers and Teams. We are also proposing a pathway that allows for manager discretion in assigning additional positions that they've identified as benefiting from a language skill based on community need. The Bureau of Human Resources and Office of Equity and Human Rights will be involved in the designation of the positions benefiting from multilingual employees. Another pathway is employee-initiated. Employees submit a form to the Office of Equity and Human Rights for the consideration of the language pay differential. The form will ask the employee to describe in narrative form how their language skill removes... how their language skill removes barriers for community and brings value to the institution. The employee's usage of their language skill would be evaluated through performance review processes with their manager. Through our own experiences as city employees and in developing this policy, we understand that multilingual city employees in a wide variety of positions are using, using their language skills to remove institutional barriers, not just for the public, but also for our own fellow city employees. As an example, one of our policy team members, Santos Aguilar, is a Bureau of Human Resources benefits analyst. Santos has used his Spanish skill to connect with Spanish-speaking seasonal employees who have limited English to help them understand their city benefits. Santos began to do this after noticing that something was not right. Employees didn't know that they were eligible for benefits, didn't know where to access services and how their plans worked. He took the initiative to connect with their supervisors and setting up in-person orientations where the employees could ask questions in English and in Spanish. Employees then felt comfortable reaching out to Santos whenever they needed help in using their benefit and using their benefits or when they had questions about any other HR-related questions like payroll. Santos shared examples with us of cases when he used his Spanish skill to help employees. In one case, a seasonal employee's wife needed surgery, but the employee didn't know he could add his wife to his city, to his city insurance and access healthcare services. In another case, a seasonal employee's child needed major dental work, but he didn't understand what this would cost him. Next slide, please. To be eligible for the language pay differential, employees must also meet testing requirements. This is something we found all jurisdictions we researched do. To qualify for the benefit, multilingual city employees must pass a spoken language proficiency test. The city would contract with a certified external testing agency that will administer the spoken proficiency, proficiency test. The Bureau of Human Resources would be responsible for central coordination of the testing process. bureaus would be responsible for paying the cost of tests for their employees, and we found that tests cost between $60 to $150. To retain the language pay differential benefit, the employee must retest and pass every three years, which is a best practice from other jurisdictions. More details about testing requirements are provided in the FAQ we shared with you. Next slide, please. We are recommending that the benefit be open to all types, all job types, including seasonal, non-represented, represented, full-time, part-time, limited-term, elected officials, and returning retiree, City of Portland employees. For represented employees, the city of Portland is obligated, obligated as a public employer to bargain with their public employee unions over employment relations, typically referred to as mandatory subjects of bargaining. Employee relations include, but is not limited to, matters concerning direct or indirect monetary benefits. Even though the proposed, proposed language pay differential may increase some employee wages, the city cannot simply unilaterally implement such a policy for represented employees. Because the proposed language pay differential affects employee wages, the city must give notice of the proposed policy to the unions and negotiate with the unions should they demand to bargain. Bargaining can occur under two different scenarios. For unions that have existing contracts, bargaining is limited to a maximum of 90 days before the city can implement the language pay differential for strike-permitted employees. For unions currently in successor negotiations such as DCTU and PPA, bargaining over the language, language pay differential would be folded into successor negotiations, which must be conducted for a minimum of 150 days. Next slide, please. Now I will, now I will turn it back to Tatiana to talk about level of service.
Thank you so much, Cynthia. So the level of service that we are recommending for employees who receive this benefit is in alignment with the standard operating procedures that I'm developing for the newly established Language Access Program. So thank you so much for your adoption of the Language Access Resolution on November 12th. It's very exciting and I really see this policy almost as a sister policy or cousin policy to that Language Access Policy because ever since I started with the city, I've known that this language pay differential is something that would be very important to the overall language access efforts of the city of Portland. So one of the concepts that I've introduced to the city is that concept of utilizing bilingual, multilingual staff as a language link. And so this policy utilizes this concept as a recommendation for how these staff will be used. So a language link really is talking about having an employee be that connector, be that bridge to the public who is experiencing institutional language barriers and is very important in the trust-building process with community members who perhaps have never contacted the city before. And we saw, you know, in some of that data from the 311 phone surveys. So the bilingual or multilingual employee can serve as a language link and then at any point in the interaction can connect the community member to a professional language service provider such as a telephone interpreter or video remote interpreter or onsite in-person interpreter. And this connection is so important and at any time, next slide, please. At any time in the interaction, the employee can decide to connect the community member to a professional interpreter. But in alignment with the standards from the Language Access Program, we want employees to connect the community member to a professional language service provider with the, when their following criteria are in place. So if there's safety, health, legal, financial impacts, notices of rights or disciplinary action, we should be connecting the community member to a professional language service provider. And at any point in the interaction, the community member has the right to ask for a professional interpreter to continue the, continue pursuing what they were looking for in their engagement with the city. And that is their civil right and we would connect them, of course, at no cost to the individual. Next slide, please. With regards to written translation, we are not recommending that staff who receive the language pay benefit provide written translation. The evaluation test is a spoken language evaluation. So spoken fluency is what will be evaluated. If chat, if staff choose to do any level of translation, it should really be kept to a short page or sentence. And that is because the translation process is a really rigorous professional process that requires training. And the agencies that we contract with go through quality assurance measures in order to get to the final product. So if a staff does choose to do a small translation, we do recommend that we still go through a quality assurance process and have another employee that has also passed the test be able to give the translation a review because accuracy is incredibly important as part of that trust-building with communities that speak languages other than English. And so again, if the translation need falls under any of that previously mentioned criteria, we are to submit that translation to a contracted professional language service provider. Next slide, please. And now it's my pleasure to hand the presentation back to Commissioner Fritz. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tatiana. Thank you, all of the presenters. So we are limited in our ability to estimate the total cost of the policy because it depends on the scale of employees' participation. We currently don't track language abilities of our employees, nor do we know how many would want to go through the testing process. The data collected through the tracking requirements of the Language Access Resolution that we passed in November will help bureaus demonstrate the language needs of community in assessing their bureau's services and inform budgeting. The largest determinant of policy cost is the scale of employee participation in the program and benefit. Since we don't collect the data, there's no definite way to calculate the number of, the maximum number of employees who could be eligible to receive proposed benefit. With this limitation, the city budget office drew from different available sources such as existing bureau language capabilities surveys, the Information and Referral Bureau, and participation rates of other jurisdictions to inform their budget analysis of the pay differential policy. City Budget Office estimated that a broad rate with a, it could be a broad range of city employee participation from 3% to 25%, which would translate into an estimated cost of $450,390 to 3.7 million in a given fiscal year. And I will editorialize here saying that the 25% was based on bureaus that are extremely outward-facing such as the Office of Community and Civic Life. And we think it's unlikely that 25% of every bureau would qualify for the benefit. And I also just want to highlight what we outlined that, you know, we believe that the ability to speak other languages is part of a person's experience and background that brings richness to the city. So we initially wanted to make it so that all employees would be eligible. On the advice of the city attorney and the Bureau of Human Resources, we have narrowed it somewhat. And there's a concern with the pay equity law at the state that paradoxically seems to limit the ability to pay people based on their lived experience and qualities. So that is something, as we mentioned, that we'd like the Office of Government Relations to address with the legislature next year. And we have one more guest speaker to provide testimony on the language pay differential benefit, and that's City Chief Human Resources Officer Kathy Bless. We certainly appreciated Kathy and her team's engagement through the developments of the language pay differential benefit and their commitment to the work that lies ahead to implement if the benefit is approved by council.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you Cynthia, Yesenia, and Tatiana for your comprehensive work. Commissioner Fritz, your commitment and support of the, of the language pay differential has been critical to this process and, and I appreciate it. I'm honored to speak and advocate on behalf of and in support of this policy. As we all think about how we live into our adopted values, the language pay differential is an important foundation and demonstrates to employees, contractors, customers, and other members of our community, their contributions and heritage are valued. Including the city's commitment to offer a language differential will be important within the recruitment process and helps the city to engage a more diverse workforce. It will also help retain employees who will be asked to provide communication services moving forward. Employees who speak other languages are willing partners when asked for translation services and are interested and motivated to ensure the communities with their shared language have accessible information. A shift differential honors this interest and their abilities. BHR has been a welcome participant in this discussion. We have BHR representatives as part of the committee as well as stakeholder groups. BHR has helped to support the committee through research and have offered policy recommendations. We are committed to the work ahead. We know there is administrative work to be developed as well as interim bargaining to establish the pay differential within our represented employees. We look forward to our continued work with the committee and advocating on behalf of this policy. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak this morning.
Thank you, Director Bless. You've been a great partner to us. So with our final slide, we have a couple of questions for you. Council, thank you for your patience as we went through the methodology for how we developed the policy that we're proposing. And I appreciate you giving us the time to let us explain it. And we're happy to take questions. And then we have the questions for you as to whether you support the recommended approach and then what is council's direction on the funding approach, whether it should be within bureau budgets or a central bank, noting that, as I mentioned, some bureaus are likely to have higher utilization of the benefit than others depending on, on what their duties are. So thank you, Yesenia, for sharing your screen. With that, I'll turn it back to Mayor Wheeler to, to manage the council discussion.
All right, good. Thank you. What an excellent presentation. Thank you, Commissioner Fritz. Thank you for all of our presenters. And with that, colleagues, this is a work session. Anything goes. Feel free. Ordinarily, we just say jump in, but it might work better if people just raise their hands and I'll call on them, given that we're virtual today. Thoughts? All right, well, I'll, I'll jump in. I'll start the discussion. I like to be provocative first thing in the morning. So I, I hope there is no disagreement that this is a, this is a worthy cause. And I want to thank our employees who have both multilingual and multicultural backgrounds because I do know that they get called on and asked to do things and that almost invariably comes without compensation. So this is certainly a just cause and I think it's an important one in terms of being a model employer and certainly helps us to recruit and retain quality employees, which we want to do. Commissioner Fritz, I especially appreciate mentioning that the city of Portland is actually late to the game on this policy. I think that's important to note that surrounding jurisdictions have had this kind of policy in place for some time. Your specific question to us was related to budget. And I, I am somewhat reluctant to make any commitment with regard to budget. I haven't even issued my budget guidance yet for the next fiscal year. I, I'd like to at least do that before I start talking about priorities within that budget. So I'm, I'm not prepared to make that level of a commitment today. I think you are asking, if, if I understood your question correctly, what structure would we use within the budget? In other words, would this just be an across-the-board CAL target adjustment for bureaus? Again, that's something I, I want to take a look at in the context of the larger budget. But as always, I have no monopoly on the truth, but that's, that's my thinking as of this moment, having just been asked the question, that I'd like to hold off and see this in the context of a larger budget.
Thanks, Mayor. That's, that's good feedback. And, and yeah, we didn't expect you to on the spot answer the question. We just, we wanted to pose it because clearly there is some concern amongst bureaus, particularly the ones who are smaller and therefore have less leeway in their budget perhaps. And also the ones who have a lot of outward-facing staff, that, that there would be a disproportionate impact on them versus some of the more internal bureaus.
Yeah, and that's, that's a huge issue in and of itself. And that's, that's certainly something I'm working with Director Canard, the Budget Office, and my team in the mayor's office to address generally around potential budget direction for fiscal 2122. That's my laundry hanging in the back, isn't it? That's fabulous. Hang on.
Commissioner Ryan, why don't you take the focus off the man's laundry?
Actually, I'm entertained by it. I'm sure others are as well, but yeah.
You know, the, the good news is it's just a sweatshirt. It could have been a lot worse.
You know what? This was just a wonderful presentation. You could really, you not only presented well, but it was, you allowed us to be in your head as you went through this journey. And I thought you just framed it really well, Tatiana. And I don't know, I'm just really taken with the, the journey. I'm also reflecting on the amount of times I've had employees in my lived experience that we've leaned into for this service. And, you know, I'm not surprised to hear that other jurisdictions are, are further along. And I was taken with your example of Hillsborough. And I definitely do have a question when it comes to the budget. I thought your question was great, bureau or, or a central bank. And my gut goes towards central bank just because it's an all-in values discussion. But did Hillsborough provide some guidance when it comes to that? I'm curious. Any, can anyone answer that question?
I can try to. And if I'm understanding your question correctly, Commissioner Ryan, is whether there was some guidance about how they allocated funds to, to this?
Yes. Was it in Hillsborough? Do, do they provide guidance if it's a, you know, department-specific, bureau-specific, or if they have a central bank? I'm just curious.
Yeah. So, and that's something that we are happy to follow up with. We do have partnership and communication with HR there. And like I said, they, they actually want to know what way we, we decide to go because they're, they're always looking at how they can improve their policy. So the partnership is there. But as far as funding, I will have to reach out and get that response back out to council. But yeah, as far as funding goes, that, that is what I will have to do. And for positions, I mean, all of them are, are department-based because they do rely on manager and supervisor approval. So it's the manager determining. So it's the manager determining, okay, so you in my department want this pay differential because you meet the criteria. So I will start the process for you. So it's department-based as as far as like the assignments go. And I will get your response as to how they do their budgeting for that.
Right. Thank you, Yessenia. I had a couple other thoughts. Where are they? I was struck by the mayor cleaning up his laundry, I think. I, let me give myself a second to regroup. Oh, I know, the gap, the gap of four hundred and fifty thousand to three point seven five million. You know, on one hand, that's that's a big gap, especially as we're all in such a mystery about our budget. But I think what I need to say right now is, is instead of looking at this as a deficit, if you will, it's it's the asset of the investment is what I want to lean into. And so if we monetize this, incentivize this, we're we're engaging more Portlanders. If there's fifty thousand roughly Portlanders that basically don't have a very, that don't speak English with fluency, they're not engaged in what we're trying to communicate with our residents, with those fifty thousand people. I can't remember if that's the right number. But and so I think if we, as we implement this, I hope we look at trying to measure the assets of having more of our residents who don't speak English fluently as a part of our fabric, about a part of our community on a deeper level. And so I think the presentation was framing that at the very beginning. But I think even when we get down to the pay, the gap, if you will, of the expense, we look at what the trade, the the investment is and what we get out of that investment. So I think I want, I want to, I want to hear more examples. There were some anecdotes of of what we project. And maybe Hillsborough and Gresham can provide some examples, further examples of that. So and I say this knowing that all of you that presented have been living that example of engaging more and more of our residents in the fabric of our civic life. So I think they're all at your fingertips, just based on some of the stories you told in this presentation. So I don't know exactly how to articulate this, but I want to make sure that we can bring more attention to how we measure the asset of this policy. And Tatiana, I think it was you that mentioned this is definitely a sibling policy to the language access policy that we just voted on. So when I saw this work session, I'm like, oh, we're just following up on on the policy we just discussed. So thank you for tying that together.
Thank you.
Cynthia, I was wondering if you wanted to share your example from the Charles Jordan Community Center?
Yeah, well, I was actually going to ask Tatiana, while we're still talking about the subject of budget and appreciate Commissioner Ryan, you framing it around investments and the trade-offs and looking at assets. Tatiana, I was wondering if you could share your experience at the ECC and also from a legal standpoint, how this policy can help with the city with cost savings?
Sure, thank you. One way that this does tie in to the resolution that was passed on November twelfth for the Language Access Resolution is that at this present time, we're not tracking any of these efforts. So, for example, every single aspect that we, that I outlined in my portion of the presentation would need to be tracked. So we would track every time one of our employees receiving this benefit would engage with a community member. We would then, even even if they're handing them off at some point in the, or connecting them to an interpreter at some point in their engagement, we would also track that, that we would have a line where we would be seeing the cost of that. And all of these, and also in tracking, we would be tracking proactive bureau-initiated efforts. So when we're making the effort to, let's say, have a staff create a training in Spanish that we're going to put out to the community. So that's bureau-initiated. And then we would also be tracking when a member of the public calls three one one and requests an interpreter. So that would need to be tracked as well. So those are those two streams that I've talked about before, the bureau-initiated proactive and the public-initiated language access request that's going to be fulfilled. And both of those are showing, are demonstrating compliance with Title VI and one is being proactive and the other one is responding to a community request. And what was the other question, Cynthia? Sorry.
Your your ECC experience and cost savings because of employees using their language skill?
Oh, sure. Well, absolutely. And so many of the projects that I've worked on that we were able to provide in over thirty-five languages for critical health and safety messaging. I worked very closely with my colleague who works for the Bureau of Emergency Management, Regina Engavida. And she speaks, I believe she speaks four languages. I speak two and a little bit, but that little bit doesn't get used in the emergency response. But so we, we were able to to edit, we were able to put out messages quickly. We were able to engage with community members, all because we were able to have that provide our language ability where we kind of cut out some steps of needing a review from using a contracted service provider. So there's definitely some savings when it when it comes to that. And also, even in the example of the CARES cards distributions that I gave, if we did not have staff that were able to engage with community in their language, not only is it that really important community connection, but we would have had to schedule onsite interpreters for the languages spoken by those different individuals receiving the CARES cards. And I believe that in some of the staff that that did provide those CARED cards in person, I think between the two of them, they speak more than three languages, three or four languages. So thank you for your questions, Cynthia.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tatiana. And I noticed that Commissioner Alex Rubio is on the call as well and wanted to invite, if you have any questions or comments, you're very welcome to join in.
Thank you, Commissioner Fritz. I just, I don't have any questions. I'm just thoroughly impressed with the quality of the presentation. And I know that this and the staff work, the dedicated staff work that I, that it's very apparent truly stems from a community-centered approach and a desire, deep desire to be responsive to community. So this has been a dream, as you know, Commissioner Fritz, for for staff for some time since I've been in that building, which was a long, long time ago. So I'm just really excited. You know, I, I am very supportive of this policy moving forward. And I just want to offer that I also feel like it's critically important now more than ever, especially because we're in COVID and and responding to the pandemic. We need to actually up our responsiveness and be more accessible to community during this time. So I just want to, maybe that's a question. How have you, what's your timeline and what what would be your ideal? And how would you see this coming, this policy coming into play during, especially during this time?
Thank you, Commissioner Elect Rubio. That is, it's really nice to hear from you. We are proposing to bring this as a resolution to council, I believe on the sixteenth of this month. And so with council approval, the work would be done to implement and put it, put it into place at the beginning of the next fiscal year. So part of your task with your new colleagues will be to figure out, you know, the funding mechanism. Was there anything else, Cynthia, Yessenia, or Tatiana, that I should mention in terms of that timeline?
I think, Commissioner, that you you hit it on the head. And what I would say is that our intent with this work session was really to present the work that we've been doing and our proposal and also to solicit council feedback as we look at finalizing the policy. So we really have about a week where we need to turn things around. So we'll make sure to be reaching out to your offices about the policy as we're looking towards coming in a couple of weeks to council for approval. And again, like Commissioner Fritz mentioned, we understand the immense amount of work that's going, that lies ahead for implementation. And again, appreciate all of the partnerships we've we've had, especially with the Bureau of Human Resources, to implement. And so we know that there's still work ahead, and that's why we are targeting July first as the start date.
Thank you. And could, I realized that we didn't talk too much about which languages would be eligible as a baseline. Could you just outline what we're thinking on that?
Yeah, I'll ask Tatiana to answer this because we've had a lot of conversation. And where we've landed has sort of, has been, again, informed by her her real-time experience in the ECC.
Thank you so much. Yes, so the factor one analysis that, from which we derive the City of Portland Languages list, it's a federally mandated assessment, but it's really looked at as, it's really a minimum threshold that we need to reach. So in my experience as the Language Access Lead for the Emergency Response, I worked with both Multnomah County's language list and our language list because that really truly recognized a more fuller picture of the languages spoken in our region. But even with the data that I shared with you, this, the landscape of our city is ever-changing. And more and more languages are spoken than even those captured in the combination of Multnomah County and our languages list. So there are a lot of reasons why many of our communities are undercounted or do not engage in being counted. And so therefore, some of those languages that are spoken in our region that would be critical for reaching community and letting community engage with their city government and the benefits of government are not listed or contained in those, in those lists that come from demographic assessments. So such as indigenous languages, I think I highlighted that in the, my resolution presentation. There's many languages that are indigenous languages spoken in Central America. And we have community members that speak those languages here, and we have employees that speak those languages. So going, staying with the languages list, we're actually really happy that now it's broader. So for example, French, West African French is not on one of our lists. It is on the county's list. And we have employees that speak that language. And there are many community members that would be incredibly well-served by us having employees that were speaking that language in particular, as well as Swahili, Karawandan. There's just many, many languages that our employees speak that will be critical to providing services to community members who also speak those languages. I also wanted to just quickly say that also from the perspective of the emergency response, if we had this policy in place, then next time there was an emergency or even whenever needed, we would be able to really cast the net wide on how many city staff would be able to come on board during an emergency and provide critical communication support to community.
So just to clarify, Tatiana, thank you for that. The link, the languages that are on the language list would be automatically approved for this pay differential. And then other languages could be petitioned either to the manager, to human resources, or the Office of Equity. Is that correct?
Correct. And I'd like to hand it off to Cynthia because she can speak more about. We did a pivot a little bit due to advisement that we got from the Bureau of Human Resources and the Attorney's Office. So I'm going to let Cynthia talk a little bit more about that pivot that we made from going to just looking at the language list to being more broad in the application.
Yeah, so as Yessenia mentioned earlier, and as you mentioned, Commissioner Fritz, we were looking at more of a universal approach where if an employee met certain criteria, they would be eligible for the language pay differential benefit. But after, you know, advisement through the City Attorney's Office, we understand that there were concerns around compliance with the pay equity stat, state statute. We, we understand that we have two different equity-type initiatives, policies that are sort of at odds with each other, but we don't think that was the intent of the pay equity state statute. And it's a reason why we are in conversation with the Office of Government Relations and examining whether or not there are efforts to make improvements to the pay equity state statute. Because we understand, our understanding is that the drafters of the state statute have recognized after it rolled out where there might be areas of improvement, which included multilingual, when we're talking about multilingual employees. So originally, we had a broader approach, but we were focused on prioritizing the languages that were on the City of Portland's language list plus languages that were just below the threshold. And we're considering an appeal approach. So if there were languages that an employee spoke that weren't on those lists, that they could still have consideration. But with the pivot that we've made with the three different pathways and through conversations with, yes, Tatiana about her experience with the ECC and our understanding of the vast different languages that our community and our employees speak, we decided to not just limit to certain languages in this new proposal.
Thanks for the clarification.
Could I, could I ask a question? And it's a basic one. And I'm sorry, because I just want to clarify it in my mind. And again, I'm really appreciating this discussion. It seems like this is a policy that is solving multiple problems simultaneously. And I want to make sure I understand sort of the nature of the problems we're solving. First and foremost, just based on the title of this, this is an issue of internal equity amongst our employees. And we heard good stories anecdotally from folks saying that because they have certain language skills, they are called to do things that are not necessarily core to their job for which they are not being reimbursed. And so there is the equity perspective there. The second component that I'm hearing, and Dan referred to this as an asset or a value or an investment, which I agree with, is that there are a lot of people in the community who speak languages who are not able to access city services, which, by the way, they are paying for through their taxes because of language barriers. And then I'm hearing a third issue, which is one around recruitment and retention of employees. Do I pretty much have those buckets accurately identified? Or is there a refinement you'd like to make to that?
You, you've hit it right, right on on the head, Mayor. I would say those are the three buckets that we're trying to solve with this. So it's a workplace equity issue. It's a service delivery concern. And to your point, it's a, it's a recruitment tool. And we've always approached it in that way with with the Bureau of Human Resources as well. Because what we've seen through our internal research and through our qualitative data is, you know, some, some folks maybe came onto the city thinking, they came on from other jurisdictions thinking that the city had a similar policy, and it turned out we didn't, right? And some of that is a responsibility on the applicant as well. But I think it just speaks to the overall nature of that Commissioner Fritz was speaking to in the introduction where it seems to be that almost all the local jurisdictions have some sort of of policy that then employees think that we have as well, and then they come and turns out we don't. So it's definitely a recruitment tool.
Okay, that's helpful. And can you give me some sense of the one dollar per hour? Is, where does that one dollar per hour come from? Is that commensurate with what other local jurisdictions have been offering? Or does that come from some other economic modeling? Where does that dollar per hour come from? And that may be a Kathy question.
Hi, Mayor. So I don't, I believe that the dollar comes from, and the the group can chime in at any time, is looking at what has been offered in other jurisdictions. And since the committee has decided to take an equitable approach by giving a flat dollar amount, it was really used as a, we looked at what percentage other jurisdictions were paying or flat dollars, multiplied that certainly by an annual amount to come up with an average. We thought that would be equitable within the marketplace and certainly more equitable to the employees.
That doesn't quite answer my question. So is, is, is that a placeholder or is that based on on some actual value?
I am going to let Yessenia talk, I think, or Cynthia. Yeah.
I can jump in really quickly, and I have our notes here from the different interviews. So I just was referring to that. So thank you, Kathy, for for covering for a little while so I can look at those notes. So roughly, at the jurisdictions, what we were looking at was, depending on if an employee was part-time or full-time, it ranged anywhere from like sixty, sixty dollars a month, so like thirty it ranged anywhere from like sixty sixty dollars a month, so like thirty dollars a pay period or something like that to like a hundred and fifty. So we came down to the dollar an hour because per pay period, let's say it's a full time employee. You're talking, you know, eighty dollars a month. So it was finding a balance in between all the dollar amounts that we found from all the jurisdictions and also just being conscientious that this is the first time a policy like this is being presented at at the city. And it's, you know, a dollar amount seems like when you see a dollar amount, it seems a little bit more digestible, if you could say. So I I think it that that was our reasoning behind that. And I'll let Cynthia jump in as well.
Yeah, just a clarification. So the dollar per hour is eighty dollars. If you're a forty hour a week employee, eighty hours per a biweekly pay period, that's eighty dollars with this dollar applied and then per month would be a hundred and sixty. So we did look at the, we did want to be competitive in looking at other jurisdictions and what they offered for compensation. We did consult with the HR staff about sort of where to land. So we did consult them as well. So that's, I don't know if that answers your question, Mayor, but that's what we where we decided. I can speak to my own experience about why, again, we decided on a dollar per hour amount versus a flat rate. So in some cases, you know, it was sixty dollars per pay period, but for us it was, well, what if you have a person who works eighty hours versus somebody who's working twenty hours, but we're just giving them the same amount of money? So when I was the director of the Charles Jordan Community Center, I had multilingual front desk staff who maybe one week were working ten hours, the next week working twenty hours. So and again, and then comparing them to a full time employee. So instead of giving them just the same flat amount, we were trying to be proportionate to the actual number of hours that the individual was working.
Yeah, that that makes a lot of sense. I appreciate that. Thank you. That's helpful.
And I'd just like to add into that that then I, as as the elected official, was thinking as and as an employer, you know, what would be an incentive that people would bother to take the test? And yet not be so expensive that bureaus would be reluctant to give might be reluctant to give employees permission to take the test or to to approve a particular position. So it seemed that it's, you know, for all of these reasons, it seemed that it's it just it it's also kind of settled where I think is a reasonable dollar figure.
Jump in, excuse me. I appreciated that you seemed to make it clear they had bumpers on when you would actually need an official translator, someone that specializes in. Was it going beyond a tagline or one sentence? Is that true? Okay, I thought that was really helpful to catch that. And it will, I think it'll be very helpful when you're recruiting and retaining staff to know what the bumpers are there. I I noticed and I was impressed with your outreach efforts with community organizations. Because I spent the last fourteen years in the schools and the school districts, I think, are much further along from a service delivery standpoint on this. I know we were having these conversations in two thousand and five. And so I hope that you're reaching out, especially to the East County, East Portland School Districts that have such a high percentage of their students and families, especially who do not speak English at home. And also our hospitals and healthcare organizations. So I just, when we look at other government entities beyond municipalities, I hope we look at healthcare and schools who I've been on the front lines of this for some time. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Good points. Any other questions or comments? Well, I very much appreciate everybody's time this morning. And we're really excited to be bringing this to council before the end of the year. It has been two years in the making within my office and probably twenty years in in the making or beyond within the City of Portland employees. It does, as as Tatiana explained, both today and with the language policy, it's compliant with with Title Six. And so it's it's going to help us in multiple ways to to meet multiple objections and and bring us along. So again, thank you, everybody, for all of your participation and hard work.
Thank you, Commissioner Fritz. Great discussion, everybody. Thank you. We're dismissed.